All you, Mike.
Thank you for joining the Boston Zoning Commission Public Hearing. The open public meeting law requires that I notify the public that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that an audio and visual recording of this meeting is being made. Before taking a roll call, I do want to welcome to the zoning commission someone with an incredible track record of service to the city of Boston, Ryan Woods. Ryan, welcome to the zoning commission.
Thanks, Mike. Happy to be here.
We will now take a roll call of the members present here at the beginning of the meeting. Please, please signify by saying present. Ms. Hatton?
Present.
Mr. Demela?
Present.
Ms. Morikawa?
Present.
Mr. Mar?
Present.
Ms. Miller?
Uh, yeah, present.
Mr. Left?
Present.
Mr. Arroyo?
Present.
Mr. Ostrich?
Present.
Mr. McNeil?
Present.
And Mr. Woods?
Present.
We'll now take a moment to allow the introduction of interpreters for today's hearing.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, we'll, we'll start off with Joan and then we'll go to Horan.
Cyrus, uh, good morning, everyone. My name is Joan. I'll be the Cantonese interpreter for this morning's meeting. Uh,大家早上好，我是今天的广东话翻译员。一陣間見，唔該曬。Thank you, sir. Respect you.
Good morning. My name is Horan and I'm the Mandarin interpreter for this morning's meeting.
Terrific. Now we'll go to Melissa, followed by Nu.
Hello, everybody. I'm Melissa. I'm the Spanish interpreter. Hola a todos. Soy Melissa, la interprete de español. En breve vamos a activar interpretación y para acceder van a ver una opción en Zoom que dice interpretación. Si no lo pueden ver, hacen clic en los tres puntos y desde ahí acceden al canal de español. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Nu. I'll be the Vietnamese interpreter for the meeting this morning. Xin chào mọi người. Tôi tên là Nu. Sẽ hỗ trợ thông dịch sang tiếng Việt cho buổi họp ngày sáng hôm nay. Và để được thông dịch sang tiếng Việt, xin quý vị vui lòng chọn hình quả địa cao và chọn ngôn ngữ là tiếng Việt. Vietnamese sẽ được hỗ trợ thông dịch sang tiếng Việt. Xin cảm ơn. Thank you.
All set, Cyrus?
Uh, just two more. Uh, we'll finish off with Jardine and then Zanilda.
Hi, my name is Jardine and I am your Haitian Creole interpreter for this morning's meeting. Bonsoir. Bonjour tout le monde. Nono es Jardine y si moi même capéter pour nous en Creole Haitien pour réunion matérielle. Merci.
Hello, this is Nilla and I'll be your very important interpreter for the meeting. Alof sin. Bon dia. Nono es Zanilda. Debe ser mi interprete de cabroniano dentro de momentos. Será abierto que es canal de interpretación y se clic en que es tres punto y escoge lingua de preferencia. Obrigada. Thank you.
Terrific. Uh, the interpretation channels are now open.
Great. Thank you all. Uh, this is a public hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider a petition for the approval of the Eighth Amendment to the Master Plan for Plan Development Area Number 69, the 100 acres, and a petition for approval of the development plan for parcel A1 within Plan Development Area Number 69. The hearing was duly advertised on December 19, 2024, in the Boston Herald. In a Boston Zoning Commission hearing on proposed petitions, the proponent will first present their case and are subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We will then take support and opposition for public comment at the same time. If you are planning to testify, please take your time now. To verify that the computer microphone you are using is active, click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel. This will signal to staff that you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, it will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting by phone and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When we call for testimony, staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You will be unmuted. Uh, your webcam will not be active. In an effort to accommodate all who would wish to speak about this proposal, each person will be given up to two minutes to comment. Commission staff will indicate when 30 seconds remain. At that time, please conclude your remarks so that the hearing may continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents will be allowed a brief rebuttal if they so desire. Will the BPDA please begin the presentation?
Morning, commissioners. Thank you. My name is Dylan Norris and I am a project assistant with the Development Review Division of the Planning Department. I am here before you today to present the Eighth Amendment to PDA Number 69, the 100 Acres Master Plan, as well as the Plan Development Area Development Plan in relation to the Article ADB Large Project located at 259 to 267 Summer Street within South Boston neighborhood. Um, the proposed project contemplated the adaptive reuse of an existing eight-story office building located on the 8,970-foot-square lot on the corner of Melcher Street and Summer Street. The proposed conversion will result in a new net residential total totaling 55,695 square feet, which includes 77 rental units, 36 of which will be studios, 24 one-bedrooms, and seven two-bedrooms. Uh, 15 of the 77 units will be affordable units, meaning 20% of the units will be affordable. So 12 IDP units held at 60% of the area in median income, as well as three units reserved for Section 8 HUD voucher holders. Um, the pilot program and the office to residential program was authorized by the BPDA Board. Uh, you can go to the next slide as well. And you can go one more as well. Thank you, John. Um, but the program was authorized by the BPDA Board on October 12, 2023, and it offers an approved applicant a tax abatement in exchange for converting their underutilized office into multifamily residential rental units. Um, on September 24, 2024, the BPDA received a letter of intent from the proponent. Um, based on the criteria of the executive order signed on September 23, 2024, uh, the formation of an impact advisory group was waived for this project. On September 20, 27, 2024, the BPDA received a project notification form as well as the Plan Development Area Development Plan and the proposed Eighth Master, Eighth Master Plan Amendment to the 100 Acres Master Plan that we're reviewing today. The Planning Department hosted a virtual public meeting on the 21st of October, 2024, which was well-attended and well-received. Uh, the, the public meeting was advertised in local newspapers, as well as a notice posted on the Planning Department's calendar, as well as sent to the South Boston and South Boston waterfront distribution list. The comment period for all three of these filings closed on November 27, 2024, and the proposed project, the Plan Development Area Development Plan, and the Eighth Amendment to PDA Number 69 were presented and approved at the BPDA Board Public Hearing on December 12, 2024. Uh, since approval at the BPDA Board, the project has also submitted its site plan and letter of no harm, as well as confirmed its compliance with Article 32, Groundwater Storage Recharge in relation to the Groundwater Conservation Overlay District with the Planning Department and the Boston Groundwater Trust. Uh, thank you. I will now turn it over to Ted Schwartzberg to go over the planning context in which the Planning Department staff reviewed the project. Thank you.
I don't see Ted on the line with us. Uh, have the Planning Department staff confirmed Ted is available and with us?
I don't believe, uh, sorry, Mike, I don't believe Ted's, uh, available today. I think he's on vacation.
Well, I can go over his remarks if that'd be helpful. Um, so the planning context and the zoning context is partially in relation to the Office to Residential Conversion Program. Um, under the PDA Number 69 in parcel A1, which is the parcel that, uh, 259 to 267 Summer Street resides, um, there is already an allowed use for multifamily residential, and the proponent is not, uh, is not proposing any dimensional changes to the, um, parcel use. So, uh, it is only an internal renovation, um, and isn't requiring any further variance. Uh, the only reason we admit are administratively touching the, uh, the PDA is to acknowledge, uh, the new development within, uh, PDA Number 69, as well as, um, confirm consistency with, um, the Groundwater Conservation Overlay District and, um, make some updated amendments to the community benefits and mitigation in relation to the project. And I think we can turn it over to the proponent team now.
Thank you, Dylan. Uh, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent, uh, the, uh, the petitioner and the developer of the site, uh, which is 263 Summer Street Development LLC and Boston Pinnacle Properties. Its principal, Adam Burns, uh, is here with us today, as is John Beatty, Vice President for Development. Also joining us is Chad Woolman from Balance Architects, the project, uh, architects. Uh, Dylan, I think, provided a very thorough summary of both the proposal, um, for the adaptive reuse of the building uh, and for, uh, why we are petitioning the zoning commission. As Dylan mentioned, this is a zoning compliant plan, fully conforms with master plan, uh, of PDA Number 69. Um, with that, I think it might be helpful, most helpful, to turn the presentation over to Chad Woolman, uh, who can show, um, uh, the, uh, the site and the building, uh, for the benefit of the, uh, of the commissioners. And then we'd be happy to take any questions that anybody may have.
Uh, thanks, George. Uh, good morning, zoning commission. Um, so as you mentioned, I'm Chad Woolman of Balance Architects, uh, architect on the project. So I'll run you through our slides relatively quick here. As we mentioned, there's, um, no real change, uh, to the existing site here. Um, so you'll see here the site map. We have the project locus marked out here, the 263, uh, building kind of on the corner there of Melcher and Summer. Um, you know, then a quarter-mile radius, uh, various modes of transportation, including South Station, uh, bicycle routes, uh, and transit routes. Uh, next slide, please. Again, here, just some, some actual photos of the, the site, kind of really homing in on exactly where the site is um, and what it looks like as you're coming across the Summer Street, uh, bridge from South Station. Um, and prominent in that image is the Boston Wharf Industrial Real Estate sign, which, um, we'll be maintaining and actually upgrading the lighting on that. Uh, next slide. Uh, some more context photos. Uh, as you can see, the building's, uh, in fantastic shape. Um, and you can see a little bit here on the right that actually the sidewalks have been recently upgraded, including a dedicated bike lane, some benches, trees. Um, so that, that's great. So there's not really anything to be done there. Um, next slide. And some more context photos here on Melcher Street, kind of looking at the, the back end of the building. And then just again highlighting that wharf sign is that we're maintaining. Next slide. Uh, here we have the site plan utility. So one, one important note, and this was mentioned earlier, uh, by a member of the team, was there is some stormwater recharge kind of happening in that back alcove. Uh, the current is just a paved area with the transformers at the back of the building. Um, and then in terms of additional items to the site, we're going to be, uh, making some upgrades to that curb and sidewalk back there. They're not in the best shape, um, and then proposing some bike rack locations along the recently upgraded street along Summer. Next slide. Um, these images are actually relatively important. These are cross-sections, elevation, showing, um, what's visible from the street as we're adding a new, uh, roof deck to this building. Um, so as you can see, you know, obviously from the side of the bridge close to the building, you don't visually see any of this. What's interesting is even all the way across from Dorchester Ave, you actually won't be seeing any of that roof deck there. Uh, next slide. And then here's some, some rendering, just kind of reiterating that. Uh, this was from Dorchester Ave. Uh, next slide. Uh, the rear of the building. Um, so here, you know, the, again, the change in the exterior minimal. Um, we're bringing back some historical quest with, uh, some Juliet balcony-style doors. It existing mover locations, so no change to the openings other than what's in filling them. Uh, next slide. And kind of as was mentioned, for, you have 77 multifamily units and kind of the breakdown there. Uh, next slide. Uh, is there supposed to be building plans in there? Not see them. There should have been, uh, floor plans, I thought.
That's all I got.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I can give you, I'll just give you a quick summary of it. Uh, basically, the basement has, um, and I think it's mentioned in here, there's somewhere here, there's 40 parking spaces in the basement. Uh, the first floor will be, uh, two retail slash commercial space will be left in shell condition. And then floors two through, two through eight will be the, um, residential units, approximately 11 per floor.
Thanks, Chad. This is George Marancy. Just to clarify, the 40 parking spaces in the basement are bicycle parking spaces, not motor vehicles.
Oh, yeah, my apologies.
Thank you, Chad. I believe that concludes our presentation. Would be happy to take any questions from, uh, commissioners.
We can move forward with questions from commissioners unless it, are there building plans or renderings that, that the proponent team wishes to present? Um, they may have come to the, the commission separately, but.
Uh, Chairman, the, uh, the, the interior of the building will be reconfigured. Again, it's going from offices and some ground floor retail to, uh, residential and some ground floor retail. So they're not particularly illuminating. Um, we did, uh, thought, we did think that we had a presentation. If any commissioner does wish to see them, I guess we could try to pull them up.
Okay. Uh, we'll move forward with questions from commissioners.
Um, I, I just have a quick question. Um, and it, it's not really relevant with respect to detail on the plans, but I'm just, um, interested in how you're dealing with trash, given that the use is changing from office to residential, which would result in, um, you know, to the need to manage residents' trash. And is that going to be occurring toward the back of the building and inside or outside? And just how that circulation works? Um, and was it a big change from the, the office use?
Uh, good question, Chad. I think you probably have the plans in front of you that you can reference in real time. Maybe if you want to speak about, uh, how the trash now is being handled with the change in the building's uses.
Or George, I can happily take that since we're going to be managing the building long-term. Adam Burns, project proponent. Thank you for the question, Jill, and commissioners. Uh, presently, in that back transformer area that is sheltered off of, uh, Melcher Street, are two, um, where there's a switch and a transformer that are above grade, as well as two very large dumpsters that service the office building. Um, those two dumpsters are going to remain on-site and service the 77 residential units, and they've been sized appropriately for said units. Um, we do anticipate doing some, you know, nice screening and buffering to kind of shield that, that switch that is there, the big green box, and the transformers, as well as those dumpsters. But they're going to remain in that alcove sheltered at the back of the building.
Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I, I have a question that I, uh, to drop off. When you, the early discussion was referencing 40 spaces. Yeah. Then, the next thing I heard was bicycle spaces is. Can we just go back over that again, please?
Uh, George Marancy, um, yes, Mr. Mar, there are, uh, the spaces referenced were bicycle parking spaces. There are no, um, motor vehicle, uh, parking spaces associated with the project. Uh, the building is, is not being changed, and there will be nothing in the basement again, except building mechanicals and, and bicycle storage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Hearing none, we will move forward with public testimony. Again, if you're interested in testifying, please raise your hand on your Zoom device, um, or hit star nine if you're on the phone.
I do not have any raised hands, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, seeing none, there'll be no need for rebuttal. We'll move into our business session and entertain discussion or motions from the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I would, um, be happy to make a motion that we approve the Eighth Amendment to the Master Plan for Plan Development Area Number 69, the 100 Acres, and the Development Plan for Parcel A1 within Plan Development Area Number 69, the 100 Acres at 259 267 Summer Street, South Boston.
Second. And, uh, just, just, just to add a quick notes, Mike, uh, Demela, I just want to say, you know, look, I, I, I think this is great to see these welcome conversions from office to residential use and, and I see some of these moving forward, uh, here, including this project. So, um, looking forward to seeing the, um, seeing the completion of it and would love to see more of these, um, hit the pipeline to add much-needed housing to the, to the market here in Boston.
I second that. I know there's incentive to change these offices to a lot of different things, but we're in a housing crisis now, not a lab or hotel or any other crisis. So, um, great to see this project moving forward.
Any other discussion or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move forward with a roll call vote. Ms. Hatton?
Yes.
Mr. Demela?
Yes.
Ms. Morikawa?
Yes.
Mr. Mar?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Left?
Yes.
Mr. Arroyo?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrich?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, that's 11 in favor and zero opposed. So the motion carries. Congratulations to the proponents.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
We'll move forward with our 9:15 public hearing item. Uh, again, thank you for joining the Boston Zoning Commission Public Hearing. The open public meeting law requires that I notify the public that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that an audio and visual recording of this meeting is being made. We'll now take a roll call of the members present at the beginning of this hearing. Ms. Hatton?
Present.
Mr. Demela?
Present.
Ms. Morikawa? Ms. Morikawa?
Present.
Mr. Mar?
Present.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller? Working on it.
Father.
There you are. Uh, Mr. Left?
Present.
Mr. Arroyo?
Present.
Mr. Ostrich?
Present.
Mr. McNeil?
Present.
And Mr. Woods?
Present.
This is a public hearing before the Boston Zoning Commission to consider text amendment application number 529 with respect to squares and streets zoning. The hearing was duly advertised on December 19, 2024, in the Boston Herald. In a Boston Zoning Commission hearing on proposed petitions, the proponent will first present their case and are subject to questioning by members of the commission only. We are taking support and opposition at the same time. If you're planning to testify, please take time now to verify that your computer microphone is active. You will click the hand icon on your Zoom control panel if interested in testifying. This will signify to staff that you would like to speak. When your hand is raised, it will be blue. If you are calling into the meeting from a telephone and would like to testify, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When I call for all testimony, staff will announce your name and allow you to speak. You will be unmuted. Your webcam will not be active. In an effort to accommodate all who would like to speak about this proposal, each person will be given up to two minutes to comment. Commission staff will indicate when 30 seconds remain. At that time, please conclude your remarks so that the hearing may continue and others may be heard. Finally, the proponents are allowed a brief rebuttal if they so desire. Will the Planning Department please begin the presentation?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Nichols, and good morning, other commissioners. Uh, my name is Abdul Razak Zakaria. I'm one of the planners on the zoning reform team here at the Planning Department. Um, I'm also joined by my colleague, Maya Katler-Gold, um, who can introduce herself briefly, uh, before we start the presentation.
Um, thank you all. Uh, I'm Maya Katler-Gold. I'm also a planner on the zoning reform team in the planning department.
Great. So today, we are presenting these minor text updates, uh, through the form of a text amendment to squares and streets zoning, uh, which came before this commission back in April of 2024. Uh, the purpose of these text amendments are to make slight updates reflective of lessons we have learned in the implementation of this zoning in the Matapan area, which is the current area of Boston, where this is mapped, as well as, um, information that's been gathered and opinion shared during the planning initiatives in Cleary Square and Hyde Park and Rosendale Square and Rosendale for the Squares and Streets Initiative. Next slide, please. So in summary, the three high-level changes and updates being proposed are an update to some of the formatting of the text and tables within the Squares and Streets, uh, use tables, um, to make it easier for folks to read for particular zoning regulations with attention to the ground floor active use requirement. In addition, uh, there is a update to provide greater land use flexibility in a few of the Squares and Streets districts, particularly the S2, uh, Main Street Mixed Use District, uh, based off of what we've heard from engagement on interest in providing, uh, allowances and conditional allowances for upper-story uses, um, in mixed-use areas. And then the third of which being an update to the S2 district in which the primary frontage, um, of a building would make ground floor residential dwelling units conditional, uh, such to further promote mixed use and commercial activity on the ground floor, while still providing a pathway for fully residential, uh, buildings to develop in those particular areas. Next slide, please. Our core reason for proposing these updates to Squares and Streets zoning, as mentioned, come from the work that's been done so far within the Rosendale Square and Cleary Square areas as part of our planning initiatives, known of as our small area plans. In these processes, we have heard from folks a greater interest in, uh, commercial, uh, land use flexibility when it comes to these districts, so that when we get to the point of mapping these districts in those areas, they feel more appropriate to the existing conditions within, uh, these different commercial centers. In addition, this is responsive to a resident zoning petition submitted by the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, uh, that was initially, uh, put forth, but then retracted by the petitioners, um, in interest to see this petition that we are putting forth today, uh, to move forward and present it to the commission. The updates that we have proposed took into account the petition's interest, particularly when taking, uh, considerations about these upper-story uses and other concerns on land use flexibility. Um, and we also were able to take in lessons learned and questions received through the process of implementing this zoning within the Matapan area, particularly with potential development projects that have been seeking clarity on the rules when proposing in, uh, existing Squares and Streets districts. Next slide, please. Uh, to further on this point, uh, our main focus, as you all know, in the zoning reform team is to hope to and aim to revise, maintain, and update the zoning code as necessary to align with the city of Boston's goals and plans. In particular, with Squares and Streets being part of the base code and being a citywide zoning, set of zoning regulations, it's important for us to not only update it for the purposes of keeping it aligned with the needs and goals in areas where it's currently mapped, such as in Matapan through the process of the Plan, Matapan Planning Initiative, but also to make sure that it's better aligned with the rules necessary to support the current and future visions of areas where we're doing current planning processes and where we imagine that Squares and Streets would be zoned. So we're kind of doing this continuous tweaking and, and, and revision and maintenance of the zoning code such that it's useful in each application, rather than leaving it for long periods of time without it being updated as necessary for its broader applicability. Next slide. Um, as such, we are working with zoning in this instance and in many instances where you'll see us in the future as a living document that is in need of these consistent tweaks, um, which, uh, shows itself in the way that we are tracking the implementation of Squares and Streets districts as they continue and as they are mapped, and accounting for trends that are learned and identified through community engagement and through our broader planning processes and analyses. Next slide. Uh, as a high-level reminder, uh, Squares and Streets zoning districts are the mixed-use districts that were entered into the citywide base code back in April of 2024, as adopted by this commission. Uh, they include a set or a toolkit of these six mixed-use districts that range from largely and primarily residential districts to larger-scale mixed-use districts, uh, promoting a variety of housing density, mixed-use activity, and for the purpose of providing that density and activity in existing commercial centers and near major public transit resources, such as MBTA T stops and major bus routes. Next slide. Uh, as noted, the only area within Boston right now is within, uh, is Matapan, where Squares and Streets districts are currently mapped. Um, they are mapped appropriately in areas that have existing and, uh, perceived future mixed use and commercial uses and activity. Uh, these districts were mapped and adopted, uh, through a map amendment back in May of 2024, in alignment with the recommendations from the Plan Matapan process. Next slide. Um, so as such, uh, as I mentioned, these are the high-level goals for this zoning amendment. I'll pass it on to Maya now, who will go in-depth for each of these, uh, specific changes.
Uh, thank you. So we're now going to go through a summary of, of each of the proposed changes, starting with the formatting changes. Um, so next slide, please. Uh, so the main part of the zoning that's being reformatted is where we locate the list of active uses. Active uses are uses that make something feel like a main street. Active uses are uses that make something feel like a main street that typically opens the public and makes an area feel vibrant and welcoming. Um, those specific uses are listed at the bottom of this slide. The reason the zoning has a list of uses which are considered active uses is because some districts, uh, specifically S three, S four and S five require that a certain portion of the ground floor is, uh, occupied by active uses. Next slide, please. Uh, currently that list of active uses is found on the use table, meaning the active uses is one of the categories that the table is sectioned into, like residential uses or commercial uses. That means that because a use can only be in one section of the table, something like a retail store or restaurants cannot be considered both an active use and a commercial use. Uh, we have found that this has been confusing for members of the public, um, during conversations about active and commercial uses. Um, it also makes it more difficult to navigate the code because if something, someone is looking for a use like a retail store, um, on the table or in the definitions, they will likely look in the commercial uses, uh, but it's currently found in active uses instead. Uh, because of this, we're proposing moving the uses that are currently in the active uses section of the table into the commercial uses or civic uses sections. Along with this, we would add a definition that lists that same set of active uses so that there's no change in the uses that satisfy the active use requirement. Um, that's the bulk of the reformatting that's happening in this amendment. Along with this, there's other changes needed to keep the zoning consistent or overall improved drafting. All of those changes are annotated in the draft that, uh, uh, we provided to the commission before this hearing. Um, again, none of these changes would, um, change any of the actual zoning rules. Uh, next slide, please. Now getting into the proposed changes to the use regulations. Um, this amendment proposes changing land use regulations for some uses, uh, that are listed here, um, for some of the Squares and Streets districts. These changes are overall focused on moderately increasing the flexibility of these uses. These uses are commonly found on the ground floor as well as upper floors of buildings within mixed use areas. And so this update is meant to affirm the existing land uses, um, that we've identified, uh, through, uh, small area plan engagement. Um, this increase in flexibility also responds to feedback we've heard in engagement about these specific uses and generally community desires for more types of commercial and mixed use development. Next slide, please. Um, many of the changes are focused on increasing flexibility of uses on upper stories of buildings. Uh, this slide shows a few photo examples of uses like entertainment and events and offices, which this amendment makes either allowed or conditional on upper stories in more of the Squares and Streets districts. Um, for a few larger uses, specifically large grocery store and large service establishments, this amendment makes them allowed on the ground floor in more districts. Um, but contain maintains a conditional use on upper stories to control them, the impacts of the larger uses. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide lists each of the uses, um, by the Squares and Streets District where the change is proposed. Um, as you can see, S two would have the most change. This is because the S two district is intended to be what we call the Main Street Mixed Use District. Uh, but the current zoning is slightly more restrictive in terms of the land use regulations, uh, in comparison to S three, S four and S five, especially on the upper stories. Um, so a lot of these changes are focused on making S two a better fit to serve, um, as a Main Street Mixed Use District across more of Boston neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Um, lastly, I'm going to walk through the change, um, to the ground floor residential, um, allowance in the S two district. So starting with the reasoning for this zoning change, we've heard concerns from community members.
Maya, it appears your audio cut out.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so I'll start at the beginning of the slide. Um, so I'm going to walk through the ground floor, um, residential updates, the S two district. Starting with the reasoning for this change, um, we've heard concerns from community members about residential uses, particularly dwelling units being allowed on the ground floor along key main streets and how that could lead to losing the commercial character for certain areas. Um, currently, the S three, S four and S five districts already forbid dwelling units on the ground floor, um, along the primary lot frontage. Um, along the primary lot frontage just means the side of the building that faces the main part of the street as opposed to the sides that face other buildings or any side streets or alleys. Um, in the S two district, however, ground floor dwelling units are currently allowed, um, along the primary lot frontage as long as there is a four foot front yard. Um, the S zero and S one districts are much more residential oriented and wouldn't be mapped in these types of main street areas. So the S two district is where we felt like we could really address the concerns about ground floor dwelling units in more commercial areas. Next slide, please. Um, so the change we're proposing is that ground floor dwelling units would become conditional on the primary lot frontage. They would still be allowed on non-primary lot frontages with a four foot front yard. The benefit of this is that a dwelling unit on the primary lot frontage would have to get a conditional use permit. So there would be a process to help ensure that dwelling units aren't replacing commercial uses or commercial uses are desired by the community. Um, additionally, because these types of dwelling units won't be forbidden, um, we aren't creating new non-conformities in areas where there's a mix of dwelling units and commercial uses on the primary lot frontage, um, which exists in the S two areas in Matapan. Uh, lastly, because dwelling units would still be allowed on non-primary lot frontages, new fully residential projects could still be possible in S two without any zoning relief as long as there's a non-dwelling unit residential use on the primary lot frontage, like a mailroom or a lobby. Um, next slide. So just a quick recap of all these changes again. Um, this amendment would reformat the text and tables for clarity and readability, especially how someone reads the active uses and ground floor active use requirements. Um, this amendment would provide greater flexibility for a variety of land uses that are common in mixed use areas. Um, and add a requirement for special permission for ground floor, uh, residential dwelling units in the S two district. Um, this amendment would not change which uses satisfy the active use requirements and would not remap or change the boundaries of the existing Squares and Streets districts in Matapan or map any new Squares and Streets districts in any new areas. Um, I'll pass it back to Abdul to talk a little bit about engagement.
Thanks, Maya. Next slide, please. And to conclude our presentation, I wanted to walk through the engagement and public feedback process that we had for this amendment. Uh, firstly and largely, we made sure to notify and discuss this amendment with residents within Matapan as the only neighborhood so far that has Squares and Streets zoning and where the changes would have the most immediate impact on proposed development there. This included sending mailed notices to all Matapan property owners and existing residents and tenants who are within the boundaries of the Squares and Streets districts that are mapped there, as well as presenting the proposed updates to the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council and providing members of that council and residents who are connected to it with an annotated summary map of those updates as it relates specifically to the Matapan area. Uh, we also followed up with having our citywide public meeting on November sixth, a virtual public meeting in which we provided an executive summary of these proposed updates along with the formal draft text amendment that was provided, um, and held discussion and answered questions on that amendment. Uh, we had a public comment period that was open for one month from October twenty-third through November twenty-second, in which we received seven comments, including two comment letters. Um, and we held virtual office hours as well, uh, one evening on November twelfth and again in the afternoon on November fourteenth. Uh, and lastly, we provided responses to the received public comment letters, uh, written by, uh, myself, Maya and our, uh, Kathleen Honor for Deputy Director of Zoning Reform, uh, and made sure to post our responses to each of those comments, uh, to the, uh, planning department website. Uh, in total, these were our efforts to make sure that we are transparent throughout the process, both in the updates that were being made, particularly to folks who are in the areas, uh, most immediately impacted by those changes and to provide clarity on how we best were responsive to comments that were received. Uh, to, to that end, uh, that's the end of our presentation. We're happy to take any questions or comments.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Questions from commissioners?
Abdul, can I just ask a quick question because I clicked on some of the links that you all provided us um, for the, this particular section, which I found extremely interesting. Um, in fact, I, I was reading the public comments and was I reading the correct section where there was over three hundred pages of comments and you all responded to them? Was that, um?
Oh, that is from our, uh, what you saw in April for the ma- the main Squares and Streets amendment. Yeah.
That was the main Squares and Streets. Okay, thank you. I just, I, I had clicked on all of these links and was surprised that there were so many. So the seven comments that you referenced in the public comment period were those other seven comments for this particular tweak and, and cleanup. Um, okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Aisha?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. So I just want to, um, just make a, a point in, in saying that where I can appreciate your, um, due diligence in going to the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council, um, not everyone in Matapan goes to that council meeting and not everyone has the opportunity to, um, go to a meeting in the middle of the afternoon. I think that's what I heard. It was an afternoon meeting. So, um, you know, as you move forward in this process and, and as you move forward into, in this process, it will behoove you to make sure that you're, you're really reaching and giving people an opportunity to, to be a part of these discussions. Um, just having one ownership on one council and the expectation that everyone's listening, hearing from them or, um, attending, um, to me is not that suitable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Aisha. Um, other comments or questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we will move forward with public comment. Um, if you are interested in testifying, um, please note, uh, your interest by raising your hand on your Zoom device. Um, I do see that we have a representative from Councillor Peppin's office, um, who we will take first. Um, and so, uh, Diana, uh, please, uh, unmute yourself and, uh, offer your comments.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Nichols and Commissioners. This is Diana Brancheck from District Five City Council Enrique Peppin's office. The councillor would like to go on record that he is supportive of this text amendment application, updating the articles relating to the different Squares and Streets districts. As the representative for the district that had the first two launches, councillor Peppin has been supportive of Squares and Streets since its inauguration last year, understanding that it will provide zoning relief and allow more housing in our wonderful communities. Echoing the presentation, this text amendment came from community members of varying zoning opinions to make these articles clearer and provide more ground floor use. This amendment shows a collaborative effort between the community and the hardworking Squares and Streets team that should be supported and celebrated. Thank you for your time and hearing other, our statement.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak should note their interest now.
I don't have any other raised hands, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, then we will move into our business session. Are there any, uh, motions or discussion from commissioners?
I, I just want to note that I felt that, that by, you know, an eight month period passed and we're getting, um, these updates and changes, I was very pleased because we've discussed that in other hearings we have where we want to monitor how things are going and not slow down the opportunity for these types of programs to be, um, utilized. So I appreciated the, uh, the efforts because, um, reformatting in and of itself with our existing code is, is a huge, um, a huge challenge. So, um, thank you to the staff for taking this on in, in, in my mind in a fairly quick, um, turnaround.
Thank you, Jill. Ryan?
I, I just want to echo Jill's comments there and thanking the staff anyways. We can make things more clear and clarity to get more community engagement on these topics. Hearing that there was concerns on land use flexibility and seeking clarity on the rules, making sure this is a working document that continue to, as trends set on, that it can, uh, we can respond to that feedback. And a lot of these are confusing just when you hear a certain S two, S three, trying to figure out everything that's going on, making these tables clearer and more easy for community to be able to engage and give proper feedback. So just kudos to the staff for all the work on this.
Any other discussion?
We'll make a motion to approve text amendment application number five two nine, Squares and Streets zoning update article, Articles two, eight, twenty-four, twenty-six, fifty-three and eighty.
Second.
We have a motion and second. We'll now move forward with a roll call vote of each member present. Ms. Hatton?
Yes.
Mr. Demella?
Yes.
Ms. Morikawa?
Yes.
Mr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Left?
Yes.
Mr. Arroyo?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrich?
Yes.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Uh, and I vote yes. Uh, it's eleven in favor and zero opposed. The motion carries. Jeff, any housekeeping for members of the commission today?
No, nothing today. Uh, just a reminder that we will have, uh, a hearing, a meeting, rather, uh, three weeks from today on the Net Zero Carbon zoning that was heard, uh, and presented to you guys last year, last September, I think it was. Um, just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware this will be the only item on that agenda. Um, the zoning amendment itself did not change. Um, however, I believe the city is going to present more information that this commission had asked for, uh, at that hearing. Um, and with that said, I believe also there will be, um, a report given by Kathleen to the commission, uh, kind of like an annual report on what you have done, what the planning department has done and what the next year will hold for everybody here. So, uh, nothing today, but twenty-ninth will be, uh, will be the next time you get some updates from Kathleen and there will only be one hearing on that day. So that's all that I have.
Hey Jeff, uh, Dave Marr here. Uh, question for you on whatever presentation, uh, you know, that, you know, is intended. Will we be getting that, uh, it sounds like it's going to be a, you know, a sizable amount of information. Will we be getting that in advance?
Yeah, I tried to get everything to you in advance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know with maybe the possible volume of that information, you know, that it might be difficult, but no, that's great.
I, I, I don't think it's going to be the library of Congress, Steve, but, um, I will get you everything that you need. Don't worry.
Okay. I love reading that stuff. Jeff, you know that.
Oh, I know you do. Uh, anybody have anything for me? Oh, one other thing before we do leave, one other thing, and this is important. I will be sending everybody here. Um, getting paid by the BPDA was very simple. Um, for you guys, all I had to do was submit a couple of pieces of paper. City of Boston loves to make things difficult. So I think you all have to register as an independent contractor, uh, to get paid through the city. So I have information for you that I will send either today or tomorrow that will outline what you all have to do to get paid by the city. Good times. So I will, uh, send that out as soon as I can, but that's all I have.
So Jeff, next two meetings, January twenty-ninth and then?
February twelfth.
February twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay. We will move to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thanks, everybody.